Probably. I mean, the last time I was over this way, I was playing golf on golf carts.
Golf carts?
Yeah, no, but there was no houses around golf carts back then, except along the Sarita Road.
Welcome. We're going to get started. Today is Tuesday, September 10, 2024. The time is 6:03 PM. The location is the Crown and Flahills Middle School located at 16705 South Howden Road, Vail, Arizona, 85641. My name is Rob Purville. I have been appointed by the Director of the Arizona Department, the Department of Homeland, to preside in this public hearing. This public hearing is to provide you with an opportunity to make verbal comments or submit written statements regarding the proposed issuance of Class II air permit number 96659 for Copper World Inc., a proposed open pit copper mining and processing facility located at 9025 East Santa Rita Road in Sarita, Arizona County. Representatives of the department standing are myself, Jeff Christensen, Permit Engineer, Dr. Feng Mao, P.E., Air Distortion Monitor, Carla Marietta, Air Permit Unit Manager in Balge, that at the end of that, Facility Emissions Control Section Manager. By law, a public hearing must be conducted on the record. Therefore, the proceedings are being recorded in electronic media. We have a court reporter over here that's going to take everything down. Because this is a public hearing, the purpose is to obtain comments from you. Any of you staff will not be answering questions in the context of this public hearing. If you have questions about the matter being discussed in this hearing, please include them in your comments. If you wish to comment, please fill out a speaker slip, which is available on the information table at the front of the room. They've already brought it over to us, except for the ones coming in right now. This will allow everyone an opportunity to be heard and allow us to match the name on the official record with you and the speaker. Individuals in order in which the speaker slips have been submitted, please bring your name clearly and sure that it is spelled correctly for the record. We have a microphone up here to my right that people will speak into, and we will call you in groups. We'll tell who's going to be and who's coming up so we can get through this. You may also submit written comments this evening. If you have a written comment, you must submit one prior to the closing of this hearing. By law, all comments made here or in writing are considered by the department before making your final decisions on the proposed permit. The department's written response to your comments follows the department's review and evaluation of your verbal and written comments. This document is known as the responsiveness summary. It is available at the time that the department makes a final decision on the permit. If you wish to be notified of the decision made by the department, please be sure to sign in on the attendant sheet located in the information table. The agenda for this hearing is as follows. First, Mr. Christensen will give a brief summary of the nature and content of the proposed permit. Then I will begin to call speakers in order in which I received the slips. Each speaker will be given three minutes to ensure everyone has an opportunity to speak. If someone has made the same comment, you can acknowledge the comment to allow more than you can.
Good morning, Rob. So first, I'd like to thank all of you for attending this public hearing. My name is Jeff Christensen. I'm the Permit Engineer who worked on the permits for the Copper World Project. And today, I'm going to give you a brief summary of the proposed operations and the bigger departments. Copper World Inc. is proposing to construct and operate the Copper World Project at 925 East Santa Rita Road in Sarita, Arizona County. The Copper World Project is a proposed open pit copper mining ore processing facility. Copper ore will be out mined from the open pit mines and transported by all truck to the processing facility. Oxide ore will undergo crushing, leaching, and extraction processes to produce copper cathode. Sulfide ore will undergo crushing, milling, concentration, leaching, and extraction processes to produce copper cathode. The facility will also have the option to produce copper concentrate from the sulfide ore. Sulphuric acid utilized in the leaching processes will be produced onsite with an onsite sulfuric gas appliance. The facility's potential to emit is greater than the significant thresholds for total particulate matter, particulate matter with nominal diameter less than 10 microns, and particulate matter with nominal diameter less than 2.5 microns. Therefore, the facility is required to obtain a Class II air quality permit. The Copper World Project is subject to the Arizona Minor Resource Review Program. In spite of the requirements of the Minor Resource Review Program, Copper World implemented exclusion control technology with enforceable emissions limitations to go with operational monitoring, record keeping, and recording requirements to ensure compliance with these requirements. Copper World Inc. was also required to conduct an ambient air impact analysis to, in order to demonstrate that emissions resulting from the operation of the Copper World Project will not result in interference of the attainment of the national ambient air quality standards in all areas that are accessible to the public. The Copper World Project will be required to maintain ambient air quality monitoring limitations to assist in the evaluation of the effectiveness of dust control plans and to evaluate the air quality impacts of the project. Thank you, Rob.
Nina Lewenberg Lexenberg, Kim Doughty, and Jeff. And that's all it says, is Jeff. And we have a microphone up here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nina Lexenberg. My comment is on filtering. ADEQ must ensure that the permit contains enforceable standards of monitoring to guarantee that pollution controls operate as effectively as HUDB is serving. There is nothing, as far as I can tell on the permit, that specifies that HUDB and/or ADEQ must monitor pollution control systems. Even if HUDB says the manufacturer claims their scrubbers and filters are 99% efficient, neither HUDB nor ADEQ is factoring in equipment malfunctions, transient disruptions, or human error at the proposed mine. Dust collection systems, we know, do well controlling particles 10 microns or larger. But this Class II permit that's before us does not adequately address compliance standards for particulate matter down to 2.5 microns or smaller. And it is these tiny airborne poohs that can evade the hair in our nostrils and amebas in our throats, which are our filtering mechanisms, and make their way down to the tiny air sacs deep in our lungs and put our citizens at risk for asthma, emphysema, bronchitis, cancer, and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, which leads to oxygen deprivation, heart attacks, strokes, and premature death. In conclusion, the plan should specify what the manufacturer's specifications are in spell one, how HUDB will meet the specifications of controlling emissions down to 2.5 micron and smaller. And two, what entity is qualified to objectively verify that pollution control is being properly implemented at the mining site? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to shout out to the Santa Rita Guardians. Where you at? Raise your hands. All right. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you. My name is Kim. And this is my first community meeting with a panel of experts from ADEQ that have decreed to comply with the demands that HUDB Mining Company is wanting to put forth. Wanting. First, I'd like to share with you that I do have firsthand knowledge on the dangers and destruction that mining companies try really hard to overlook and to ignore. My grandfather, William, my Uncle Melvin, my Aunt Terry, all made their living from mining copper in Arizona, but not without a price to pay. When speaking to my uncle, he told me that his lungs are scarred from the years of mining copper, and he uses oxygen daily to breathe. He also told me that his friend is receiving a monthly income from suing the mine for his illness. In the last days of my grandfather's life, I watched him deteriorate. He had every illness the mine promised he would have, even spitting out blood and gasking for air. This is the grim reality of breathing in any, any mining dust or contaminants. It does not matter if you work or live by the mine. The air quality cannot be measured properly, especially when the wind is blowing in and through the Santa Rita Mountains. Nobody should be forced to breathe in bad air, period. My grandfather was a gentle soul, and I miss him to this very day. I refuse to be a victim of HUDB. Now, I ask the panel of experts if they know where I live. Do you know where I live, sir? Do you guys know where I live? Am I sorry? He's going to show me on the map where I live. You recognize that? Where?
We don't. We don't. We don't. We don't.
Jerry Bustamante, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you come on up and show them where I live? Come on. Aaron, come on up. Show them where I live. I live right here, you guys, between the tailings. They're not telling you the truth. They're hiding my family. Let me finish my speech here. Did my father and grand help me with it? In conclusion, I find that HUDB could not be trusted if they failed to tell ADEQ that I am living on the mountain with livestock. Their greed has blinded their hearts. Now, I speak to the ADEQ panel to say I strongly advise you, strongly advise you, to revisit and dismiss the air quality control permit along with the Aqua for Protection Permit. That you are so ready, that you are...
It's time for Jeff to speak.
No, it's not. No, it's not. It's not.
Aaron, we're here with the direction. I'll wait one minute. Proceed.
Okay, okay. Let me get, it's just right here, right here. You got to hear this, right? Okay, I'm asking you to revisit and dismiss the air quality control permit along with the Aqua for Protection Permit that you are so ready to hand over to HUDB. I will not be ignored. And remember, our Heavenly Father has a last say, and this is his land.
All right, now, two minutes, and everybody here. Going for two minutes? Or do you want to give me three?
Give him three.
About three. Ready, ready? I want them to go to two. Ready? Come on. Speaking to the... I have this map, and everybody should look at it. Greetings. My name's Jeff. I live in Hovisha, Arizona. Two weeks ago, I spoke with Aaron, the Project Manager. Will you please stand up? Aaron, first call, second call? Aaron. Still got a minute and a half, okay? And so he's the Project Manager of HUDB Copper World, and he's overshadowed by Mr. Bustamante. Would you please stand up? They were unable to tell me where they plan on putting the leaching pond. HUDB's website depicts the leaching pond extending to just 400 meters from my kitchen window. I open the window every night as the wind blows from east to west. The leaching pond would be off-gassing literally in my backyard, directly into my house. In my aerospace occupation, I'm already exposed to up to 10 hours a day of spray paint fumes. It is only practical to wear my face respirator for 20 minutes at a time, and then I feel I've had a loss of breath. But it comes with the territory. I can do my job. But I can't come home to a chemical pool in my backyard. I live next to the Santa Rita mountains because it's a clean area to recharge my batteries. I still remember spending hours dreaming of purchasing my home next to the National Forest. Google Maps stopped depicting the Santa Rita mountains using the color green soon after HUDB's emergence. How fatal.
Good evening. My name is Seba. I drove down from Tucson tonight, although I spent the weekend at Kent Spring. Maybe somebody knows where that is, in the Santa Rita Mountains. This area is truly magical and fragile at the same time. We owe it to our children and our community and the wildlife we call home to fight for its preservation. I also drove down a couple of weeks ago to ask a question, which is bothering me, about emissions. And let's talk a little bit about fugitive emissions. I didn't know much about it until I read the permit application, but I reviewed the air quality permit for a long time, and I was stunned that ADEQ had accepted the categorization of ore processing as fugitive emissions. So under the Clean Air Act regulations which govern this process, fugitive emissions are emissions that cannot be reasonably prevented. Typically, these are emissions produced by activities like road traffic or blasting. Those are open to the air. They cannot reasonably be prevented. The distinction, however, between fugitive and standard emissions is important because fugitive emissions, being considered beyond the control of the applicant, are not included in calculating the total emissions from this mine, even though they're harmful. Emissions caused by ore processing activities are normally not considered fugitive because these emissions can be prevented from escaping by the use of containment structures. For example, conveyor belt for carrying crushed ore could be enclosed in housing. There are many steps that HUDB could have taken had ADEQ not been down and allowed all ore processing activities to be considered fugitive. There aren't many that could have taken. When I asked ADEQ a couple of weeks ago why the ore processing activities of Copper World were being categorized as fugitive, ADEQ stated that ore processing activities should not be considered sources of fugitive emissions. In fact, I talked directly to you, sir. And you said, quote, "I don't think it would be unreasonable to account for those as non-fugitive emissions. In fact, I think going back, we should probably look at those as non-fugitive," end quote. This admission by you, the Permit Engineer, means that HUDB, this foreign mining company seeking to destroy your property values and your children's health, must be permitted as a Class I source of emissions. This is my argument, okay? All of those factors mean nothing because you're not even including ore processing activities. So they simply do not qualify for a Class II permit, which is much easier to obtain. If this company is permitted as a Class II, ADEQ has violated its own regulations. Contrary to what seems to be the prevailing belief among the foreign mining CEO of HUDB and the ADEQ engineers in Maricopa County, the folks here in CDT and in Tucson and in Sarita are not a tribe of uneducated hicks who don't understand math or science. The people I've met, you, from CDT, from Vail, from Sarita, and Green Valley, can't be easily manipulated by the promise of $50 grocery cards as a hidden superior. We're not going to be a ghost town, so thank you.
Rick Granal, Jean Pickers, and Nancy Kowalski.
Good evening. My name is Rick Granal, co-founder of the Southern Arizona Business Coalition, an organization established to support the mining industry here in Southern Arizona.
We know what you're going to say.
I got a leash about it. I'm also a card carrying member of the Bend Bay Society. I've had over 21 surgeries. I've had enough metal in me to start my own mine some days. And I just want to say this. I'm so grateful to the Veterans Hospital here in Tucson because they have taken great care of me. And even today, as of post my 24th surgery, 23rd, whatever it is, I've got a new spinal fusion to my back. I say this because, no, I'm looking for sympathy. Why I say this because it's important that each one of us understand the importance of this industry that contributes to our society each and every day. Please, excuse me, excuse me. Please allow me the opportunity to finish. I don't interrupt others. But this is also going in my 16th year of these processes. So I'd like to thank ADEQ and the other agencies over the last 15 years who spent so much time, energy, and resources to ensure the integrity of the permitting process, contrary, contrary to some one of those made believe. All right? This is not an argument. This is, this is a mess. The sad, the sad part, there is nothing in our society that mining does not contribute to, and that is a fact. We have an national shortfall of copper. We, we have a process. Miss, please allow me to finish. We, by the year 2032, there will be a hundred million metric tons shortfall of copper right here in the United States. And I want you to think about this, as I was wheeling my speed, wheeling it to the operating room. Am I, as... Thank you. Please, please let the commentators make their comments on the video tonight. I want, if I may, one word. I want to thank the opposition for their attention to this as well, because I would tell you one thing, contrary to what you might think, the men and women that do these processes and these permits do listen to you, which in answer, the better end of this permit. So again, thank you, ADEQ.
Jean Pickers. Please, I know it's emotional, we give a little bit of comments so we can get there this evening. She was before Nancy.
Hi. I'm Jean Pickers. In 2008, we moved to Corona Day, Tucson, directly downwind from the proposed Copper World Open Pit Mine. I have lifelong cough reactive asthma. I'm telling you from infancy. I was in oxygen tent at 11 months with an asthma attack. Around 2012, my asthma, which had been under control for years with medication, began to get much worse. I saw a Mayo Clinic asthma specialist who changed my medication. I could once again use my backyard and do my favorite hobby, which is planting beautiful flowers. I am extremely concerned that HUDB will not keep dust around the pit wet down and that toxic particles will end up in my yard, in the air that I breathe. If that occurs, I could end up hospitalized with severe, life-threatening asthma attack. What guarantee do I have that that will not happen? I don't see how ADEQ can inspect frequently enough to protect me from toxic air. Please do not approve this air permit.
Nancy Kowalski is next. Luz Rojas, Linda Bayless, and Susan Alton.
Hi. My name is Nancy Kowalski, a recently retired healthcare provider in Southern Arizona for more years in the care of the bed. I'd like to speak a little bit about particulate matter and heavy metals. HUDB cannot be allowed to exclude the effects of heavy wind events when assessing the ambient air quality impacts of particulate matters smaller than 10 microns, which are commonly termed PM10s. That's how I'm going to talk about them. These particles are regulated by the EPA, and they may include heavy metal toxins like lead, selenium, and cadmium. In projecting the possible concentration of PM10 emissions caused by wind blowing over tailing piles, ADEQ allowed HUDB to exclude high wind events under the theory that these were outliers and not likely to happen. Well, anybody who lives in Tucson, or Sarita, or around the mountains knows that days with extreme wind events are common, and strong wind is what will cause this fine particulate dust to blow. ADEQ should not allow HUDB to model future dust blows based only on lower velocity wind events. Per the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, which is part of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, cadmium is on the EPA National Emission Standard for Hazardous Air Pollutants. It's listed as one of the 33 hazardous air pollutants that present the greatest threat to public health in urban areas. The International Agency for Research on Cancer has identified cadmium as a Group One carcinogen. What does that mean? It means that cadmium is known to be able to produce lung cancer in humans and animals exposed by inhalation. This is the connection with the dust. The EPA has determined that lifetime exposure to 0.005 parts per million, that's a lifetime exposure of cadmium, is, quote, "not expected to cause any adverse effects." That's not exactly a strong or ringing endorsement of the safety of cadmium that's exposed by inhalation. A safer range of airborne exposure to cadmium is difficult to determine, because now I'm going to quote from an article in a journal called Molecules, from a 2021 article about heavy metals and human health. Due to the harmfulness of cadmium, which promotes serious health issues even after short-term exposure, complete avoidance is recommended. The adverse effects of chronic exposure to cadmium ions are as follows: anemia, kidney damage, bladder, prostate cancer, and osteoporosis, among other things. And this affects not only the residents in the area, but the people who work in mines, miners. I have taken care of people who've worked in mines. It's really sad to watch somebody suffocate to death from all the mine-related things. Is it nighttime? I'm done? Okay. So thank you. I took an oath to do no harm, so that's why I'm standing up here. I want, I would like the ADEQ to take into account those higher velocity wind events. And actually, given the dangers, I think it's reasonable to not do any kind of air permit for this mine at all. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Luz Rojas, and I'm asking that ADEQ must remove quotes that allow for excess emissions during emergencies, malfunctions, startups, and shutdowns. The context for this is under the Clean Air Act, state permits must follow federal standards for pollution emissions, which do not allow for excess emissions during emergencies, malfunctions, startups, and shutdown. The logic is that emitting facility should be engineered so that it avoids exceeding emission standards even during unusual events. The state is not allowed to waive enforcement or approve... The state is not allowed to waive enforcement or approve exceedances prior to such an event, although fines or other sanctions occurring after the event may be applied with discretion. The bottom line is the Clean Air Act's purpose is to prevent any releases of dangerous levels of airborne pollutants. I am very concerned and surprised that the planned mine activity, emissions such as the sulfuric acid processing, and the tailing storage facilities will be so close to Corona Day Tucson homes. I'm not sure the current population, I'm guessing it is about 10,000 homes at the moment, and that's not including the Sarita and Puyallup Creek communities. This is a growing community with new home builds going up today, not too far from here as we speak, and also on Sarita Road. The gentleman that worked for the mine that spoke in August about following safety practices and how they are taught to gear up while they're working does not apply to the average citizen in their neighborhood, out and about, walking their dog, going out for a jog or a bike ride, or simply sitting outside, nor to the children in the schoolyard. Again, I ask that the bottom line is the Clean Air Act's purpose is to prevent any releases of dangerous levels of airborne pollutants.
I want to talk about tailings and the dust and the wind. We know that tailings from the Hudbay mine will contain lead and other materials, and unlike water, tailings are subject to the whims of the wind. At the August meeting, you said that your models anticipate winds that top out at 45 miles per hour, and you base the reach of the tailings to correspond to winds that remain under 45. Jeffrey T. Davis and Craig Schumaker wrote a paper published in 2008, and it's titled "Hazardous Weather Climatology for Arizona." You can find it on NOAA's website. The paper reviewed weather from 1950 to 2004. Davis and Schumaker found that Arizona averages 29 severe wind events per year, with the greatest concentration over the southernmost climate regions. They define a severe wind event as one when winds exceed 58 miles per hour. Davis and Schumaker also describe the presence of tornadoes associated with thunderstorms, albeit low, low-level tornadoes, that such weather events associated with tornadoes bring winds that exceed 45 miles per hour. According to Davis and Schumaker, statistics reveal that the valleys of Maricopa, Pinale, and Pima counties are well-defined areas for tornadoes. We also frequently see dust devils in this region, and these are small vortexes that are not associated with thunderstorms, but the large ones can reach, contain winds that go up to 70 miles an hour. So the model that ADEQ uses to issue its air permit has flaws, if the NOAA paper has any improvements. Hudbay will pollute the air. Lead and other substances in the mining tailings will contaminate the grounds, the miles around. ADEQ directed us to call when we see signs of pollution occurring when the horse has already left the barn. Then ADEQ fines Hudbay, Hudbay chalks the fine up to the cost of doing business, and we are left with contamination.
Right.
That's how this is playing out. We have seen this dance before. Mines across Arizona with ADEQ, ADEQ permits have polluted the land with dangerous chemicals since 1987. At the info meeting on August 1st, I understood you to say that you are bound by laws legislated by the state, and that the mining company does the paperwork and follows the recipe, then you grant them permission. I ask you to stand up for the land and honor the mission statement of your department. You are scientists and educated people, yet you have allowed the state to relegate you to become a rubber stamping agency instead of protecting the surrounding environment. If you ignore Hudbay's flawed history and issue this permit, you will sentence the landscape to be blown to smithereens and the surrounding communities to be poisoned. You have a chance to protect the land and the living communities in and around the Santa Rita's. Please step up and do your thing.
Susan Kellman and Dennis Rilby, Lynn Harris, and David DeGru.
Hi, my name is Susan Kellman. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I believe that in this assessment of the risks to the mine, we need to think about the young adults who are here now and how their lives are affected. And I say this to think about the next 50 to 60 years to 70 years, when many of us will be gone, but people who are starting their lives right now and thinking about who they're going to be in the world are here at this moment, and we need to think about how their lives are going to play out. So if we're thinking long-term, like 60, 70 years, 100 years, for people who are younger than that today, we need to look at the whole picture. As people have already stated, we know that emergencies, malfunctions, startups, and shutdowns must be included because they will occur. I defer to the person we talked about, odor processing. This is something that we know is going to happen, and it needs to be included as part of the emissions. And then also blasting effects. I understand that the timing of blasting effects are not properly timed, they can have even worse effects on the air pollution. But the biggest thing that I want to talk about is the windstorms that are happening, the increasingly changing weather that we're having, and increasingly worse winds. I live in a mobile home community, and this last year, my home renters insurance went up almost 100%. And the reason for that is there are so many claims being made from wind damage that is happening in this community, the insurance company can't keep up with it. They, they wouldn't increase the rates by 100%, you know, because nobody's going to keep that, but they have to, otherwise they've been bought of business. This is not something that's possible. It's something that's expected, it is happening now, and it's expected to continue. Also, we know from living in Tucson, this used to be every few years, there's a lot of trees blowing down in the branches. This has happened multiple times this summer. I don't know if we're going to have trees that get to be 50 years old anymore because they keep blowing down. And what we have to think about is that these things are changing, and we don't know when it's going to stop. We expect the weather to keep getting worse and worse and worse. Six open pit mines are proposed for this side of the mountain, and the other side of the mountain. That's a lot of open air, and that's a lot of dust, and that's a lot of toxic chemicals. So, we don't know what's going to happen, we don't know how the climate is going to change, but there is one thing that we can do. We can be sure that the people who come after us do not have to deal with pollution from that mine. So, so we have an air permitting process. This is what we do because we know that people, things can happen that set things up for future generations to have poor air, that's why we do this. And the terms are that if it's bad enough, we don't do it. That's why we do this. That's the purpose for having a permitting process, is that we can't say no if it's bad for the community. And I have to say that the current assessment based on wind speeds now is irresponsible. The current assessment is based on low-level winds. That's not responsible today and has nothing to say with the future. Thank you for your time.
I live north of here, a little bit north of San Javier. And I step out in the morning, and I look towards the south, and the mighty Santa Rita's greet my eyes. Rising from the desert, they gently brush the sky, guarding the habitats they hide. Madeira Canyon rests in Mount Bali's arms, a paradise of birds and trees and skies. In the lower hills, the wildlife runs free to be, to live, to fly. Rose Mountain Ranch lies at the foot of the mountain, a vast expanse of desert plain. If we, the land holds a fortune of silver and copper. But if we allow that mine, they'll scrape and scour the land, spill the leeks there in toxins in the ground. They'll carve out their hole, ruled across the land, the Santa Rita's extinction bound. Wrong mine, a vast open pit, wrong place, in the Santa Rita Mountains, wrong time. The west is not wide open anymore. Wrong mine, no Rose Mountain mine. No Rose Mountain mine. So people up in the county, joining our crusade and stop this mine from tearing up our land. Stop all extraction from all our public lands. Mine companies will have to understand that a mining act won't rule us from 1872, where picks and shovels mine the mountainsides. And until we change that law and learn to mine all rights, the Santa Rita's must be set aside. Wrong mine, a vast open pit, wrong place, in the Santa Rita Mountains, wrong time. Oh, the west is not wide open anymore. No Rose Mountain mine, no Rose Mountain mine. Wrong mine, no Rose Mountain mine. No Rose Mountain mine.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Harris. I was born in Tucson 73 years ago. Three generations of my family were engaged in mining, and I am not opposed to mining. We do need minerals, there's no argument there. We do not need copper road mine in this location.
That's right.
I've listened and read a lot of data and technical information, and it boils down to one thing. This ore body is located in the worst possible place, and it should not be mined. It's risky for human health, as we have heard from numerous speakers. It's risky for the most biodiverse habitat in this part of the United States, which is immediately to the south of the proposed mine. And it's risky for vegetation immediately to the west, which is going to be apparently affected the most by the dispersion of pollution plume as modeled and presented to us. That land is Santa Rita Experimental Range. When it was exchanged between the federal government and the state, the contract stipulated that it was to be maintained as grazing land and grassland and used for research purposes. It was not to be disturbed. This, this mine will dump toxic dust, which, when mixed with atmospheric water vapor, creates sulfuric rain. And the vegetation will be affected, the wildlife habitat will be affected, and of course, the wildlife itself, which includes several rare endangered and threatened species, birds, and mammals. So, this is a high-risk operation, risking humans, risking animals, risking vegetation. And at the very least, I believe ADEQ should require nothing less than a class one permit. I believe that the monitoring of the pollution that's emitted should be done by a third-party agency, not by the state. And I believe that due to its high risk, there should be even more stringent requirements, and ADEQ should really look at more stringent requirements. This is a potential super fun site that everyone will watch. Thank you.
David DeGru, Lynn Darin, Venters, Jeff Matterson, and Tom Schumacher.
I'm David DeGru. Was a teacher at Sarita Elementary School, upper elementary, all subjects. Many, many field trips in the Santa Rita mountains, and am still in retirement, a docent in Madeira Canyon. My friend Jules is going to help me hold the mic. This is, you saw this at the last, I know it's a little difficult to read from the back, the broad strokes are, this is the plume that ADEQ, this is a screenshot from ADEQ's presentation a month ago. And you can see from the colored areas, on the, on the poster, you can see from the colored areas, the plume where the toxic dust will follow the prevailing air currents heads out into the Santa Rita, as Lynn just mentioned, and the gray area is where the plume will be. This is based on a model that ADEQ used to determine where the plume would be. There's something important missing from this, something, yeah, something important missing from this map. All the maps at the last presentation did not have anything up here above the, and some of you are nodding your heads, did not have anything above the current operation area. Here's what, I superimposed it on the map. This is known as TSFN, or this is a tailings site, tailing storage facility north. And I superimposed it up here above the, what we refer to as the F. This is more than 500 acres, and Hudbay is currently going deep underground with this. They're not promoting it, did not show up in the last meeting, and, but they still have the land. And do we trust Hudbay not to open up the channels? That's my problem. That's my problem. You can't read the details in here. I did a little math to find out, the question was raised earlier, how many people live in a certain area from the, from this special TSFN, Tailings North? And it's about 5,000. And that's within two miles of Tailings Facility North. That's going up in Corona de Tucson, in the Santa Vina Estates, they're being built. So this is, what you heard from the other people is very true. This plume of toxic dust is a severe, severe problem. And if anybody's here from Hud Bay, we get a little depressed because we seem to be in the last stages of air quality and water quality permitting. But I'd like Hud Bay to know, there's a lot of people here who are gonna continue to resist. This is, this is not gonna be an easy, this is not gonna be an easy site for you to get in and do the mining because we're gonna have, and I'm running out of time. We're gonna have more and more opposition continuing. Thank you.
Darren Venters.
Well, thank you. Good evening, my name is Darren Venters. I live at 723 Camino Del Monte in Green Valley. I'm here tonight to support, you know, Copper World Project. And I hope, when the meeting is over, more of you will leave the city. We came to Green Valley, we came to Green Valley to live in Arizona and enjoy the country, the weather and all the things Arizona had to offer. Our view to the west was the tailings, have been there for many years. Our view to the east was the mine that's there today. So, we have found that the weather, the winds blow, but we have survived that quite well. It has been controlled. We had the pecans that generate dust, but that's okay, they keep it under control as they do the tailings from the mines behind us. If you don't mind, we'll continue here. Hud Bay has proposed a project. ADEQ has refuted. We trust them, we believe they will do their job. They have the authority to shut down the project if and when necessary. We've seen them exercise that authority in the past in this area. But I want to remind all of you that Arizona is founded on copper, cotton, climate, citrus. And that's in the great seal of the state of Arizona. So we're here to support. And I hope you will find in your heart that you can support the project as well. Thank you.
Jeff Matterson, please, please allow people to make their comments.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Jeff Matterson. And I am a humble servant of my Lord Jesus Christ. So yeah, amen, right, again, amen? But, second though, you probably know you can give an amen because I stand up here in favor of the project. I've been, I've been in the copper mining business for 40 years, right? I'm a specimen of perfect health. Okay? So, copper mining business has served me well, served my family for 40 years. Right, I was able to put my daughter through college. And it's not only me, but thousands, tens of thousands of people either working in the mines, working for the mines, supporting, you know, products, right? The capitalistic environment we live in, supporting, you know, product to the mines, right? And over these 40 years, I can, you know, attest that these, these mines, you know, do have the environmental stewardship first and foremost in the mines. They do. I'm born and raised here in Arizona, right? So, you know.
Do you live here?
No. No, but that's not the point, that's not the point. I'm here to support ADEQ and I'm here to support Hud Bay, right? So, I hear a lot of opposition, right? But I think some of it's even greater, right? Because not any one of you have showed up in a horse and buggy, right? You drove here in your vehicles, right? You left your house with your lights on, or maybe you turned them off. And when you go home, when you go home, you can turn your lights on, right? So, and how many showed up in an EV, right? How many showed up in an EV, right? So, you know, with the EV, how much copper is in an EV? We need copper, right? We will continue to need copper even more, especially for the virtual signaling of driving an EV, right? So, I'm here to support the copper mine, not only here but other places, right? And unfortunately, copper is where the good lord has put it and that's what we have to go get.
Tom Schmidt, Lynn Cheryl Tilly, Rudy Gonzalez, and Wes Austin. And please allow commenters to comment.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Tom Schmidt. I'm a Corona de Tucson resident. I was just there for over 20 years when we got our house built there. So I'm heavily invested in the community, financially and every other way. I thought I would share something on the subject of fugitive dust just for your consideration. This is based on my personal experience. In 1977, I was 22 years old and I was diagnosed with toxiderio microsis, which is otherwise known as valley fever. Most of us are familiar with its prevalence in this region. Some may not know how serious it can be. I ultimately had to have three-quarters of my left lung removed because it directly related to valley fever. I know at least one person that has died as a result of complications from valley fever. When ADEQ presented information here on August 8, they spoke of fugitive dust. This is the type of dust where valley fever virus lives. If it is disturbed and becomes airborne, it has the potential to infect anyone that breathes. After witnessing how weather conditions in our area can keep dust in suspension for days, it's absurd to suggest that fugitive dust generated by Copper World, Copper World's activities will settle out quickly and not present a significant hazard. There are days that my view of the Catalina Mountains 30 miles away is compromised by airborne dust. And there is no open pit copper mine between my house and the Catalina Mountains. I'm asking that ADEQ give far more attention to the fugitive dust component of the permit application. Pima County requires permits to generate fugitive dust and it requires mitigation. After witnessing how well that's followed, I assume the worst for Copper World Project.
Cheryl Tilly.
Hi, good evening, I don't have anything prepared, so it's kind of off the cuff, but my name is Cheryl Tilly. I'm an Arizona native, my children are Arizona natives. I just dropped my youngest daughter, UMA, two weeks ago. So she's starting out there. I'm actually here in the state of Copper World and I represent Methco. Methco is mining electric vehicle company. And it's kind of interesting, right? We're in this juxtaposition where we're trying to bring the best technologies to mining because we know we need mining, but we're trying to get it clean as possible. We're trying to protect the environment as much as we can. Yeah, absolutely, it's always an effort. But we know that we need mining and we know that the technologies available today are far and away better, have a bigger impact on quality of water and environment than they were even 10 years ago, like no 20 or 30 years ago. That's just the way it is. And as the gentleman spoke earlier, yeah, look, if you're driving the EV, if EV is a green energy, I believe you go in any way, that is three times the copper that's required for those cars than for the bicycles. So, I'm not saying it's perfect and I'm saying that we do have a long way to go, but that's the journey that we're on. And having been in this state my entire life, you know, copper, as has been said before, it is at the core of the state, so we have a lot of people that would love it. Thank you.
Rudy Gonzalez, then Wes Austin, Eric Muir, and Robert Cummings. Please keep your comments down so speakers can get through there. Rudy Gonzalez. Daniel Lee Wes Austin. Looks like Eric Muir and Robert Cummings.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ruben Gonzalez and I'm the business representative of the Opera Engineers Union Local 12. I was born and raised in Tucson, Arizona and grew up with my father working in copper mining. In fact, copper mining has been a part of my family for three generations. My grandfather, my father, and myself. To us, mining was just a way of life. Mining has always allowed me to support my own household, being able to make good wages, put food on the table for my very own five children. And only able to get them the little bits of what I didn't have as a child. As I mentioned, I'm the business agent of the Opera Engineers and I come to you on behalf of the International Union Opera Engineers Local 12. We are 21,000 members strong throughout Southern California, Southern Nevada, and across the whole state of Arizona. Our members are skilled professionals of the trade and we have contributed to the Arizona construction and mining since the 1930s. We believe Copper World will support many generations of family and employ hundreds, if not thousands, of Arizonans to contribute to the Arizona economy. I'm here to say Opera Engineers Local 12 is in support of Copper World. Thank you.
Wes Austin, please keep your, what is his name?
Good evening, my name is Wes Austin. I am also from Methco, like Cheryl mentioned before. A mining electric vehicle company focused on reducing vehicle emissions. I am here in support of the Hud Bay Copper World Project and their application for air quality permit. There are several reasons that I support the application, but I'll focus on the most important one. Copper is a critical mineral for the development and production of electric vehicles. By producing domestic copper production, the Copper World Project contributes to a clean energy transition and helps secure the supply chain for vital resources that power mining industry. American consumers and producers aspire to use responsibly produced materials to power and enhance our lives. I believe the approval of this permit helps that cause. Thank you.
Hola buenas tardes, un saludo a todos los compañeros paisanos mexicanos. También soy inmigrante mexicano. Y pues, I know, I know how hard it is to come to this country and get a job or not. And because I'm an immigrant myself as well. So, but I also, I do remember from my ancestors, you know, they told me that how important it is to take care of Mother Earth. That has always been a part of our values, you know? As, as we come into this country, we need to acknowledge that this is a country that we're gonna be living to our future generations, to our kids. So, I just wanna, I wanna, I wanna say one thing that we can, we can right now, like, start thinking about these jobs that we're gonna get and how important they are, they're gonna get us. But I want, I want to invite everybody to start thinking about what is gonna happen when these outside corporations that come into our communities here where we're trying to raise our children, what is gonna happen 10 years from now, you know? Probably in 10 years, copper is gonna be completely obsolete. The way that technology is moving now, if you start really looking at it, there is already alternatives for copper. We need to start looking at that, we need to start looking at the jobs provided by those. We cannot sacrifice what is the best little that is left. You know, we are in a time that we need to increase wildlife habitat. We need to increase and respect Mother Earth. We see the problems of global warming that are bringing us to our communities, you know? It's really, really, like, I want to invite everybody just to look on that side of the school right here, to that wall. What is the mascot of these kids?
Ja'wars!
Ja'wars is right here, you know? This is Ja'wars having that once upon a time, you know? I want everybody to think about what is gonna be the mascot in the next 10 years for these kids? Or what are we gonna tell these kids? I wish these kids were here right now and all these adults are on their way out. Why don't we invite the kids from this school to come and share what do they think about this? Do you think they would be like, "Yeah, let's mine!" There is no jobs on a dead planet, folks. So we need to start really thinking about that to give our future generations. So I ask that this permit doesn't go through. And blasting is a big thing, so emissions from blastings need to be really monitored. And, I mean, it really makes me sad to say this, but the frequency of blasting mostly established it, just a comment. But I honestly, I do hope that there is no blasting around this because the damage that will happen in that mountain will never be able to be back the way it was.
Robert Cummings, and Joshua Despereaux, Stella McKenzie, and Alan Rudians.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Robert Cummings, I'm a practicing geological engineer and also a lifelong Tucson resident. I come here in support of responsible application of science and technology. Much has been said, and with good reason, about the importance of copper mining to Arizona's economy and to the economic and logistical security of our country. Much has also been said about the emergence of copper is critical to supporting green infrastructure to say nothing of our life generally. After all, without copper, how are the benefits of those green resources, solar, wind, going to be distributed? Without copper, how are the instruments to be manufactured and the data transmitted? The support, evaluation, and maintenance of environmental sustainability? Without copper, how are scientists even going to access the field to measure environmental compliance and the health of our planet? I gotta say one other thing real quick. This was alluded to earlier. Why doesn't Hud Bay forget about mining on the North Amendment of Santa Rita's and just go someplace else and mine? Because it was said correctly. Unfortunately, what makes ore bodies worth mining is that they're rare. And they happen to occur where they occur and they don't occur anywhere else, it's not a bakery. You have to mine where the ore is, and this is one case where this is where the ore is. So, it's important just to, I'm not taking questions, I'm sorry, I'm here to talk. All of the above that I just mentioned is valid, but what's the issue here is whether ADEQ will grant an air quality permit to Hud Bay for Copper World. ADEQ does not have the authority to balance the environmental consequences and desirability and what have you for the mining industry in general. What ADEQ must do is judge Hud Bay's commitment to compliance and fulfillment of the standards supporting the permit. Now, as an engineer myself, I have seen mining industry has evolved. At last spring's Society of Mining Engineers Conference in Phoenix, at least half, this is attended by at least 4,000 professionals in the mining industry. At least half of the papers and half of the vendors deal with environmental sustainability, health and safety, and dealing with the kinds of issues that have plagued the mining industry in the past. This industry has evolved. And it will continue to evolve to improve the science and mitigation associated with environmental health concerns. Now Hud Bay has committed to making Copper World a state-of-the-art facility in all respects. Why would they do this? Why would they do this? Because it's good business. Because they need to live here too. Because they need to be a good neighbor to people in this, in this area. Hud Bay's got the technical insight, it's built to honor its permit commitments. So, because, because we, compliance with permit criteria So, because compliance with permit criteria is a prerequisite to operation, they will, I believe, honor their permit requirements. Because sustainability is good business in the long run. Thank you.
Joshua Despino. If people are making comments, please don't interrupt them. And at the end, we don't need a lot of cheering either. We want to try and get through this tonight.
Good evening. Josh Despino, I'm the business manager of IBW, Local 517 in Tucson, Arizona, Southern Arizona. We represent about 100,000 members in Southern Arizona, and I wanna, I wanna thank ADEQ on the permit process and how thorough your process is. I also see you've got the carpenters here. Got the labor union here, Labor FIA, and Operator Union. Good to see you brothers. We're in support of this and keep up the hard work.
Stella McKenzie.
Hello, can everybody hear me? My name is Stella McKenzie, and I'm a resident of Corona Day, Tucson, for 28 years. I'm 75 years old, and I have lived in and around mining towns my entire life. I have seen the devastation caused by mining to the environment throughout the United States: New Montana, Lakeville, Colorado, Grants, New Mexico, Morenci, Bisbee, San Manuel, Green Valley, just to name a few. And I have personally been impacted by the illness and deaths that result from chemicals that poisoned the land and water in the surrounding areas of these mines, mostly not seen for years after the mines closed. The economy is touted by supporters of the Copper World project, mostly supporters that do not live in the areas of Corona Day, Tucson, Vale, Green Valley, Sarrita, and other Santa Ana communities that will be directly and negatively affected by the ashed contamination from this project, especially to our precious resources, our air and our water. I ask those who are voicing their support of Copper World to look into your future. Will you be one of the families who are looking for support from this foreign Canadian company because your loved one is ill or dying due to the poison and contamination that these mines will spew out into your community? Good luck. Canadian Copper World will have left with the resource they came after, copper, and leave our precious resources, our air and our water, not fit to breathe or to drink. And to the government entities that should be protecting Arizona's citizens now against the travesty, this travesty, will you be able to provide the funding required to support and mitigate the devastation Copper World will leave behind? Please, think of the future and the communities, both human and the non-human species that will be negatively impacted due to this fine mining project. Please don't approve this.
Alan Munoz, then Jorge Pareda, Ernesto Lopez, and Glenn Lamb.
Good evening. My name is Alan Munoz, and I support Hud Bay's Copper World project and their application for the air quality permit. I am here to express my support for Hud Bay's Copper World project and their air quality permit that will enable it to move forward. Reducing the reliance on foreign copper sources enhances national security and ensures that the United States can meet its clean energy goals without being dependent on unstable or hostile regions for the essential material. Hey, Arizona, we're known for the copper state, and the copper is, we're gonna build it. Thank you.
Apologies. Good evening. My name is Jorge Pareda. I'm a member of Local 1912, which is part of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, representing over 90,000 members from Alaska to St. Louis to Mexico, the biggest council in the country. I'm here today to advocate for the issuance of the air permit by ADEQ for Hud Bay's Copper World project. The Copper World project is poised to generate significant economic benefits for the region, including the creation of hundreds of jobs for our members or the local residents, providing long-lasting positive impacts to the economy. I myself have worked in pretty much every mine in Arizona, and working in these mines, I never had not one unsafe incident. It's very safe, I'm in perfect health, and it has afforded me the opportunity to provide my family with a very comfortable lifestyle. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ernesto Lopez. I live in Meltester. And I'm supportive, I'm supportive of the Copper World project and application for the air quality permit.
Glenn Lamb. Then Sean Lopez. Sean Lopez. Kathy Delamanta, and Ross McFadden.
My name is Glenn Lamb, and I have been here in the Tucson area since 1973. I started my career in the mining business when I was 18 years old at San Manuel, Arizona. I worked for four years there. I was then moved to California, found another job, and joined Local 12 out of Wickersfield, California, and worked on the freeway system in California. I came back to Arizona in 1973 as a project manager for the big mines in Anamax on the Compters, and I worked there for the contractor for 10 years until I started my own business in 1983. I'm 86 years old. I've been around copper dust, dirt. I've never wore respirator, never smoked. I have no illnesses, and I just got a TDR cut. Tracked on my CDL rubber choices. So, if you take care of yourselves, the copper mines give me a start to start my business and go on to raise a family that I'm very proud of, and I support Copper World because I know they're good people and they'll do well for this community. Thank you, sir.
Sean Lopez.
Good evening. My name is Sean Lopez. I represent the laborers in National Union of North America. I'm here in Arizona. I represent about 2,000 Indian laborers. I'm here to speak in support of Hud Bay and Copper World, and I'd like to thank the Environmental Department for hopefully approving this air quality permit. So, Copper World, it's gonna be 20-plus-year project. I'm gonna have grandparents, parents, sons and daughters work on this project. They will have full medical, dental vision, retirement accounts. And I will have generations of locals from Southern Arizona retire with dignity, with pensions, and, you know, they'll be able to support their families for the rest of their lives, for generations. So, I'd like to thank everybody, thank you Hud Bay, thank you to all the trades, the carpenters, the operators. I'll see you guys all after the project. Thank you.
Kathy Delamanta.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kathy Delamanta, and I live in Tucson. Ladies and gentlemen of the ADEQ, I urge you to reject the proposed air pollution permit for the Copper World mine. I will be addressing the issues of wind. We have havuves here. They are tall, vertical tunnels of wind that reach as high as 1,000 feet in the air, and they move far and fast from south to north. We also have the Santa Ana winds, which move south to north. They can easily move 20 to 30 miles an hour. Now, you might say, "Well, that's below the 4500 mile an hour limit," but they move. In fact, we've had a few of them even this past weekend. These winds carry particulate matter from a mine and endanger a city of a million people. I challenge you to find any other situation on the continental US where a mining operation this large of this magnitude is 25 miles from a city of a million people. Exempting the mine from compliance during malfunctions, startups and shutdowns is not going to be a job. Please require the Copper World mine to obtain a Class 1 permit so that the mine is always accountable for limiting its air pollution. Thank you.
Thank you. Ross McFadden. Then Stanley Hart, Doug Pitts, and Tim Silver.
Everybody, how's it going? Kind of tense tonight. Let me just be plain for a second. Hud Bay, as has been said, is a foreign mining company, and their bottom line is extracting Arizona copper using dwindling supplies of Arizona water to make the rich investors and executives back home even richer. And that's all regardless of the downward effects on communities here in Arizona. They don't care about you, they care about their profits. And there's nothing weird about that, that's what corporations do. But that's, that's the fact. And Hud Bay is trying to pull a quick one here. They're trying to get ADEQ to give them a Class 2 permit. Now, I'm gonna dig in on this Class 2 versus Class 1 permit, because I work at the Center for Biological Diversity, some air quality experts, lawyers, we've looked at this, and it's very, this permit is not functioning appropriately. A Class 2 allows for lax enforcement and little oversight, even though the mine would admit more than 100 tons of capture emissions a year. This is in the documentation. ADEQ is poised to give the mine a free pass to pollute by issuing a Class 2 permit, which would be a total failure of their duty to protect our land, water, and follow the law. Hud Bay's mine is expected to emit some 4 million tons of emissions annually into the air, into the same air that most of us here breathe, that our families breathe, and the children that go to this school breathe. And it, so we rely on ADEQ to help protect us, to ensure that polluters will follow stringent guidelines to protect public health, clean air, clean water. But that's not what we're seeing in this permit proposal. They're offering up a Class 2 permit, miscategorizing emissions as fugitive and limiting critical air quality protection measures. According to Copper World's own application, potential particulate matter emissions from ore processing alone will be 135 tons a year. That's well above the threshold of 100 tons of emissions a year ADEQ has required the permit at a Class 1, which trigger a whole bunch of strident, more strident sets of protection, including EPA oversight of the project. But ADEQ, either by mistake or by design, proposes to give a foreign mining company what it wants by categorizing ore processing and other capturable emissions as fugitive. They are not fugitive. This is an incredibly dangerous categorization, the dels and the details here, because it leaves out air, sorry, I'm confused here. Categorizing emissions as fugitive means these emissions are ignored in important calculations based on assumptions that they are beyond Hud Bay's ability to actually capture them. This is untrue. It's dangerously incorrect. They can be captured, they are captured all the time, all over the mines, all over the world. Systems being used at mines that capture these emissions that ADEQ is calling fugitive are things like enclosures in domes on stockpiles, enclosures on open tailings piles and material transfer points, special enclosures over loading points. Hud Bay can capture these emissions. They are not fugitive emissions, and this all needs to be corrected by ADEQ. The numbers are empirically clear that this is a Class 1 permit, and ADEQ has legal responsibility to get this right. Thank you.
Stanley Hart.
My name is Stan Hart. I am on the board of state of Santa Rita's. And I'm sorry, we just lost about a third of the audience, and they might have learned something about mining from the people who don't think we should have a mine. I would like to just read you the mission statement per ADEQ. The mission statement on page 1 of their website "To protect and enhance public health and the environment in Arizona," period. One would think that having an open pit mine wouldn't even need to go to ADEQ because it's against their mission already. So, about the Class 1 and Class 2, Hud Bay claims that this will be the second-largest copper mine in the United States. Well, that seems pretty ideal for a Class 1 permit. So, either Hud Bay is pledging how big this is going to be, or it's obvious that we should have a Class 1 permit for it. I'd like to talk about the biggest air problem with this mine. Everybody knows, if they've lived in Green Valley, that when the wind blows, the dust comes off the tailings piles of Sierra and Coop, Mexico mines. Well, so, how is that protected in the permit? Well, it's interesting, because the permit says that... Hang on a second. "Compliance with the approved dust control plan and approved tailings dust management plan shall constitute compliance with this requirement." I'm reading exactly by word by word from the permit. So, when I read this, I go, "Oh, so they have to approve a tailings dust management plan." So, I went looking for that, thinking I could learn something about what actually will be regulated. Many pages later in the permit, I find out it says, "Prior to beginning actual construction of the Copper World project, the permitee, that's Hud Bay, shall submit to the director of ADEQ approval, before approval, a tailings dust management plan for the control of fugitive dust emissions from the tailings storage facilities." But it doesn't say that tailings dust management plan has to be part of this permit. It's arranged before the mine is started by legality. This tailings dust management plan has to be in place with ADEQ before the mine is started. Well, but it's not in this permit. Thank you. So, how do we find out? Well, they will arrange it between ADEQ and Hud Bay, and we don't have anything to say about it. So, I gotta, I need to be listening to it. Thank you.
Point of information, there have been a number of people that have spoken less than 3 minutes, so I would appreciate some lenity here. By the way, or... Or... Hold three minutes and finish your talk.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate your guidance. My name is Doug Fitz. I'm a metallurgical consultant. I've been working at that for 57 years. They call me the spring chicken, the people I work with. But nonetheless, I'm still doing it. I've done a thorough review of the reports that have been produced by Hudbay. I'm not a consultant to Hudbay. I'm an independent. And I find that the project is a very good one. I think it's well-conceived, well-engineered, and I think it provides state-of-the-art approaches to emissions control. So I'm feeling that this project could well turn out to be an example of responsible mining for the future when it's built. And I think there's many people trying to do that, but not everybody's going to reach it. I think Hudbay could do it. But my most important point is that in my 57 years, I've traveled a lot. I've been to 87 countries on business. I've worked 15 of them. And I have to say that based on my experience with regulators and permitting agencies, ADEQ is by far the best I've ever seen. And that includes foreign countries, which are much less effective, and it includes other states in the United States, particular states that have mining operations. So I feel like we can trust ADEQ to issue a permit that has proper requirements that follows the law and also provides adequate protection to all of us to make sure that the requirements are compliant and mitigated where necessary. So my feeling is this is a project that we need to do. You've heard all the same reasons before. It's good for, I think, the region. On balance, new projects always have benefits and they always have risks. The key is to balance them properly. I feel that this project, the benefits far exceed the risks, and the risks are being mitigated and managed pretty well, and will continue to be with ADEQ's oversight. So I strongly endorse ADEQ granting this permit, and I'm hopeful that things proceed as planned and everybody turns out to be happy. In the final analysis, we're all in this together. We all have to give and take, and I think this is a classic example and a good example of how we go about doing it. Thank you.
Tim Silver, then J.D. Salvatiera, Joseph Kobel, and D.L. Pelston.
I don't even need this, I don't think, but I'll be up here anyway. My name is Tim Silver. I am a miner, and I'm proud of it. I probably should have spoke earlier. What I do in the mining industry is provide dust control. I can explain to you that I have worked hand-in-hand, my company, my chemists have worked hand-in-hand with Hudbay about how we are going to mitigate, eliminate. Here are things that are different. This isn't your dad's watering program. These are topical solutions that do not go back into suspension, or don't go back into a solution, meaning you put it down, you get a monsoon, it doesn't run with the water. Well, I can tell you that. The other thing, I've heard several comments about tailings up here. Tailings are over 10 years away on this project. But if you bother to look things up, you look up online, go to a website, and you can see, "We sell sealant for tailings." When was the last time the tailings blew over in Green Valley?
Weeks ago.
That was off the surface. You can look at it. We tested this at 70 mile an hour wind. I heard comments earlier about a tornado. If a tornado hits my house, it's not going to survive. But 70 mile an hour, we test this in a wind tunnel. It's not water. It's not water soluble solutions. They have been trying and testing it. We have over a 95-plus percent dust control rate, and that is, here's a point I've heard also tonight, zero water, not one drop of water used for dust control. Any questions on the dust control?
J.D.
My name is Jonathan Salvatiera. I'm a 34-and-a-half-year railroad conductor. I've experienced a shortness of breath from my activities and my occupation. And as a point of information that I'd like to start out with, the Vice Mayor of Tucson sent in a request to the Director of ADEQ to have a separate question-and-answer period and a separate come-in period to the public of over a million people that ADEQ has thus far ignored and may still ignore in trying to further the efforts of Copper World and South 32 Hermosa Incorporated, LLC. I'm here before the ADEQ concerned citizens and the residents of Corona, Tucson. As a 23-year citizen advisory board member of the ongoing Park, Michigan Warf Hazmat Superfund site, I can say that the remediation from toxins in our neighborhoods perched in regional aquifer is more permanent than resolved, even though the polluters have received their record decision resolving their insurance carrier of their financial liability. We still have ethylene glycol and diesel fuel in our perched aquifer beneath this area of the city of Tucson, and ADEQ have marginalized to allow it to remain in place with no consideration in sight. Documentation of pollution beyond the minute limits imposed for the polluters to remedy were ignored by ADEQ in their final record of decision after 30 years of only soil vapor extraction. This is what Corona, Tucson has to look forward to if any mining activity of this magnitude is allowed to take place at all. Archaic mining laws were never intended to support the thousandfold of toxic tailings, sulfuric acid production for sale beyond their limited use. Arizona prior approval of housing subdivisions with assured 100-year potable groundwater has been ignored. This is not the Peruvian Altikama Desert with no inhabitants. It is a conglomerate of cities and towns encompassing Sarita, Tucson, Pima County, Vail, Patagonia, and Marana that sustain over 1.5 million residents, Davis Mountain Air Force Base, University of Arizona, Kitt Peak Observatory, that all currently benefit from the Santa Ana Mountains' unique geologic strata to hold and purify our groundwater. Prevailing southwest and northeast storms and their activity are documented by the National Weather Service verifying these increasing climatic changes in weather patterns that are blatantly absent from ADEQ's conceptual flawed modeling. Excuse my flag. Copper World is for-profit, foreign entity. It can literally walk away from future pollution, health, and medical liability by federal registered decree, gifting their operations to yet another foreign entity.
Thank you.
Like copper. We'll turn the mic back on.
We went four minutes without a word.
I'm going to finish my address. We've had a number of speakers that came and left, and they never use their full three minutes. We're here on one occasion to satisfy your goals and ours, so please.
One more minute.
The Four Corners, Peabody, and Coles did the same thing by federal registered decree. Our Sky Island mitigation corridor will be a dead zone without the current riparian water sources for all wildlife and human inhabitants. Current property values will decimate property owners and surrounding cities with daily extreme ozone alert. PM10 and PM2.5 levels ensuring accelerated mortality and morbidity from toxic shower and drinking water, along with aerosolized sulfuric acid, cadmium, and lead in unacceptable soil vapor levels throughout the Wind Sweat Land, gifting siliconosis, emphysema COPD, and chronic malaise to young and old alike. I'm outlining the male feces, irresponsible, unconscionable dereliction of ADEQ's mission statement to protect the quality of our land, air, and water. The notable and misguided young engineering professionals have allowed their future careers to be irrevocably maligned by administrative dictate and caress, to disregard and perjure their further final draft conceptual modeling with errors of omission and commission to keep their jobs and careers from being blacklisted. Giving known false data and information to an official of the court by certifying permitting policy as plausible deniability legal foundation is indefensible under a sham color of authority. This is the perfect formula for bureaucratic epidemiologic and economic genocide and the unlawful conversion of our national resource assets. No lawful purpose is evidenced by this proceeding. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's a shame so many people after already. My name is Joseph Kobel. I live in Tucson. I'm retired union carpenter. Almost two years now I've been retired. I've worked in over half a dozen mines in Arizona building the infrastructure, and I can assure you that the Carpenter's Union has the highest quality training for our members. All of our members have to obtain MSHA certification for safety, and we have to adhere to those rules. The Carpenter's Union spends billions of dollars a year training our members to work safely. Now, the reason I said all that is because, like one of the gentlemen was saying earlier, the mining industry and the construction industry is not stacked. There's always innovation. There's always research and development, finding new and better ways to do things. So I trust these engineers. I'm not an engineer. I just build stuff. They drew the plans, I build it according to their plans. But I believe that what the real problem here is, is a matter of trust. All relationships are built on trust. And if you trust these engineers, these engineers are not dummies. They're smart people. And this other gentleman who works for the company that puts the stuff that keeps the dust down, he is a smart man too. His company is smart, though. During research and development, it's not going to stay the same. As the mine progresses, there will be different ways of doing things to keep it safe, and that's the main goal, is to keep it safe. And I yield the rest of my time, and I encourage ADEQ to approve the permit.
D.L. Pearson, Brad Anderson, Dave Brown, and Martha Lynn.
Let me excuse me. I haven't really organized this very well. The mine will be a sulfide ore, and this is a sulfide copper ore. And the concentration is very low. It can go down to like 1%. So as a result of the mining of the copper and creating this large pit, then milling this ore with the... You will have a giant mountain of tailings. Tailings is sterile. Nothing will grow on tailings. It won't go back to nature. It has to be covered over with something, asphalt, concrete. It has to be fertilized to a great extent. So I think... And this tailings mountain is a great source of air pollution. We can see the winds as they hit like Green Valley or Limpuma, and we have dust storms. And the asthmatic people, COPD people, whatever, will suffer. So in the air permit, I don't really see anything, any provisions for this because the mountain of tailings, it'll be there forever. Hudbay will be... When they run out of ore, they'll leave. What happens then? There's no provision here for the control of the tailings. That's where I see one of the weaknesses here, the permit in addition to the lack of the Class 1. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Brad Anderson, and I am the President and CEO of the Greater Vail Area Chamber of Commerce. You know, as I sit here tonight, my biggest regret is that I did not continue my guitar and singing lessons. That was great. But the thing that I am most impressed with tonight, and as I look back on that backstage, I see a flag in the United States, and I see the opportunity that each and every one of us has to come before the ADEQ this evening and voice our opinion, and to be able to come together as a community. We're not going to have the same opinions on everything. We need to look at this overall. But the best thing about living in this country, this is a country of laws, a country of rules and regulations. And what we're asking the ADEQ tonight is to continue just to enforce and to follow the rules and the regulations that are before us now. We all have our health issues that are a concern. We also have our quality of life that is a concern. We all want the new things. We want the watches. We want the cars. We want electricity. And as a Chamber of Commerce, we support economic development. We support the community because we're all in this together. It doesn't matter whether we're just citizens that are doing one thing or businesses doing another. We all work together, and as a chamber, we are in support of the Copper World Project.
Did you say Dave Branch?
Dave Brown.
Oh, okay. I'm going...
How you doing, guys? I'm Dave Brown. I live out here in Corona. I've come to all of these meetings and... I've come to all these meetings, and every time, a ton of valid arguments, a lot of research presented, it seems to be that people need to start looking at it. Shows all the dangerous effects of this mine, and what it's going to do to this community and its running rates. Yet each time ADEQ is out here, they say, well, we got to follow the rules like the gentleman before we just said, several others have said. But all this valid evidence and research leads me to believe that maybe you need to do, change the laws, pause this right now, think about doing a little more research on this before you cause undue harm to all these people in this community. It's really sad that this has just come down to, we're just following what's written. What about all these stories? Every single person has come up here and said how it's going to affect that. None of that's taken into effect, you're just following something written down. I got a letter in mail saying, thank you for your comments last time. We approved the water block. Okay, so now you're going to pollute the water. What's to say you're not going to do this now? With the air block, you're going to just approve it because that one's approved. Take into consideration everything that's been said here. There's no amount of money lining the pockets of any advocates of this mine or anything else that's worth one person getting injured or killed or anything. Change the rules, change the laws, what are we going to do before we approve this? It's all of us to get that done. Thank you.
Martha Lynn, Benana Darian, Stephen Brown, and Fiona Jordan.
Okay, ah, yeah, I can hear myself. Copper is rare metal. It's one of the few rare metals. It's rarely able to be used. Oh, 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 again. It can be used with zero loss performance. What we need to be doing is re-mining in current mines, not tearing down Sky Islands for future superfund sites. What's missing here is the will. The people, most, the people who stand gain from the profits of re-mining are also the people who have to do the research and learn how to do this and how to make it profitable. Right now, it's easier to do what we've always done. And what we've always done has just gotten us all into trouble environmentally and in what we have left of an environment that we consider precious, that we are dependent upon for life, as a matter of fact. This is not a mine like the ones that we already have. I support people who work in mines. I honor their hard work. I honor their labor unions. I honor what they do for a lifetime. This is not one of those kinds of mines that you have seen and worked in. This is a multinational conglomerate. We're talking, we're talking six pits, six large pits and a sulfur facility, and in the future, a cathode, copper cathode making facility. These all contribute huge amounts of air and water pollution. They sit closer to Tucson than all the handful of mines their size to a city the size of Tucson. I'm a resident of Tucson. I forego the debate tonight, which is far more popular than towards AMQ, and drove from the Santa Cruz River Valley, which is where I live, to be here. Thank you. And there are, there is you, I mean, at any rate, the reason is that Tucson has been bypassed. HUDBA has done the bare minimum. They have the minimum number of meetings that is required by law to do this. And they have bypassed Tucson by doing it on the outskirts. So those of us passionate enough to come had to go out of our way to do it. Because when it was Rosemont Mine, Tucson was vehemently against it going in. And that was just one part of this entire project. This is a huge project, and it is so close to Tucson. Tucson is a valley, and it's going to sit above Tucson and endanger us with an inversion layer that for the reasons mentioned tonight will affect the air of Tucson. I'm not even going to go into what it does to water because ADEQ has already approved that. But that's, of course, my biggest fear. Let's see, we're looking at company, oh, it's done. My three minutes is done.
Let her finish her statement.
Yes, I want to hear it too. I'll shorten it. HUDBA, let's see, HUDBA is a giant, a giant. And they have, their legacy includes a murder in Guatemala, a gang rape of 11 women. It includes the overruning of Peruvian tribes in order to use their land and waste their heritage. This is not a common company. And I don't think they're going to have environmental quality on a mine like a Sarko has had here, who's gone out of their way and gone over the buffalo to protect us from the pollutants. At any rate, I don't know a mine in the United States that after the company is left has turned into a superfund site. Is that what we want to do with their Sky Islands? Here, they are considered precious mountains here. They do something that no other mountains in the United States does, no other mountains in the world do. And we want to replace them with huge stacks of rock that can never have anything grown on it. Thank you.
For once, the microphone's low enough for me. So my name is Anna Darian. My family has been in southern Arizona for 100 years in one form or another. I would like to first start off by thanking everybody that is pro-mine and is still here and listening. We might not be on the same side of this story, but I appreciate that you actually are sticking around to listen and not just here as long as you can pay to be here. So my great-grandfather worked at the Copper Queen Mine in Bisbee. My great-grandparents actually met there. My great-grandfather also died on my grandmother's second birthday from tuberculosis. And we know that this has a correlation with breathing this toxic dust all day and every day. So I'm coming here, obviously, in opposition to this mine, but I want to talk about something that keeps coming up around this evolving technology and innovation and how state-of-the-art this project is. And that sounds really great, except for the fact that what this means in 2024, because, you know, we keep romanticizing this copper past, the five Cs, this mining history that we have in Arizona, and my family's connected to it, so I get it. But these jobs that we're talking about from 100 years ago, that's not what we're living in today. With this world-class mine and the innovation, we are seeing automation coming into these mines that cannot guarantee that these jobs are going to be here five, 10, 20 years from now while this mine's operating. We don't even know if these jobs are going to be filled by locals. HUDBA has made no promises that these jobs are going to locals. We know that we don't actually have the skilled workforce to fill all of these really high-level mining jobs. So they're going to have to be brought in from somewhere, assuming that even a human and not a robot just pushing a button from somewhere else. These mines are being able to be operated with technology that doesn't require humans. There's nobody holding their feet to the fire. These jobs are actually real jobs that have anything to do with us. There's certainly no training facilities that's being proposed that I'm aware of that's going to upscale our community to even take part in these jobs. So respectfully, we need to be honest about where we're at and not romanticize the past that doesn't exist anymore. But I'm not insensitive to the people who are supportive of this. I hate that these projects pity us against each other because the people who are profiting from this project are not here. There's one guy from HUDBA, how you doing? Would love to hear from you also, you know, hi Jerry. But they're not here. We are out here yelling each other, fighting, avoiding our families, you know, missing out on our lives to fight with each other. But we're not going to be the ones benefiting from this truly. Even the people who were promised jobs, okay, some construction, we always need construction labor. You're never going to be out of a job in Arizona. This mine doesn't have to be the only place you ever get a carpet and job. And so I can keep going, but I just want to say thank you to especially some of the folks, I think you might even still be here, with your beautiful orange vest, who did actually take time to come and speak with us before. It's great to connect with people and to be able to have open, you know, kind conversations about this. And without shaming anybody, one of the people who came up actually asked me, where is this mine? And I started to get out with my little pamphlet, and I started to show them, except for the fact that I remember that I can just look up and point. And the fact that I'm standing in a school and I can point to where a mine is, is the problem. It's what we're talking about here. When we're talking about this toxic dust that is upheld from this, we are talking about children. And you have been confirmed during the community meeting that there is no safe level of lead exposure in children. So why would we have tailings piles planted a mile and a half from a school? This project, like, I feel like we're getting gaslit by what is happening here, but this is not okay. And there's other jobs that can be had. And I'm talking to nobody because they've all left because this is in their community, and they get to go home because they don't actually have to worry about this in the long run. So surely my three minutes is up. Thank you. I just want to say one last thing for those of you who've mentioned the presidential debates. I should also say I do work for Save the Sea Next Day in Arizona, if it wasn't obvious from earlier. We did reach out to ADEQ and we requested a second meeting, particularly in Tucson.
Because of the timing.
Because of the timing, because of the presidential debate, this was a formal request because Tucson is so affected by this, and the request was denied. I also know that Kevin Dahl, who's the vice mayor of the city of Tucson, sent a letter requesting an additional meeting in Tucson. And as of the last time I spoke with him, he never even received a reply. So we don't have to be in an empty room tonight, this was a choice.
Thank you.
Stephen Brown.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for taking our comments. My name is Steve Brown, and I live in Tucson. I grew up on the San Arizon branch. Graduated from the Continental School, when it was a three-room schoolhouse, and I'm intimately familiar with the history of mining in the San Arizon and the area where the proposed Copper World mines might be. I speak in opposition to the issuance of a clean yard permit to Copper World. While there are many issues I could cite, as a former schoolteacher, I will focus on just one. The potential effect of lead dust from mine tailings on Pima County children's health. The ADEQ has publicly stated that there is no safe level of lead exposure for children. Yet, you're going to decline to include effective monitoring of lead dust in the permit, and have provided no assurances that lead dust from the Copper World mine's tailings won't affect students in nearby schools. This combination of seemingly contradictory positions by the ADEQ concerns me. Why are you doing this? If you know something will be hazardous, why permit it? HUDBA has a documented record of contributing to multiple instances of lead poisoning for children in its hometown of Flint, Florida, Manitoba. What makes you think they care more about our kids than their own kids? I could cite more than a dozen medical effects of lead poisoning, but there's plenty of information in the public record so we can look it up. Your mission statement states, quote, "to protect and enhance public health and the environment in Arizona." Please look up to that mission by the time this permit, thank you.
Fiona Jordan, and Daphne Johnson, and Rob Peterson.
My name is Naomi Jordan. I live here in Tucson, Arizona. I have worked for mining consulting firms for, I don't know, about 15 years now. So, you know, I come here in support of this permit for HUDBA. And the reason I'm here supporting that is because I see from the 15 odd years that I've been working in a mining consulting firm, helping to develop mines, the progress that we're making. It is a delicate balance, as been mentioned, between risk and opportunities. And so you need to really take a look at that. How are we going to move forward without mining here in the States? Or do we let other countries mine where they don't take the concern into account? That we, as the United States, get to have ADEQ review our mine plans, our process circuits? Do we, or do we let, you know, another country do it? That they don't have those types of rigorous standards and guidelines? We can choose to let them do it, but that doesn't mean that the pollution is just, it's not in our backyard. So would you rather be able to control what's happening, or would you rather not? So that's why I'm here to support HUDBA and this air permit. Because I see it firsthand from being in the industry that there are improvements, we are making improvements in the way that we can control emissions, control pollution such as water pollution. We are making progress, but we can choose to do that here and have more control, or we can leave it for another country somewhere else in somebody else's backyard that doesn't impact me or you. Let them do it sloppy, dirty way, but it's all going to come around in the end, so.
Is that real working? That we live here and we don't want it?
I live here, I live here.
You live in Corona Day Tucson?
I don't live in Corona Day Tucson, but I'm a Tucson citizen.
That's why we're here. Sorry, but that's the truth.
Thanks, and I just want to know what a lot of people who are way smarter and way more experienced than me have said and just expressed my concern. You know, you were talking about controlling this in our own backyard because we have the ability and organizations as more scientists and engineers. Then why don't we start with a more stringent permit? That's an easy way to just control this. And not wanting any other country where they can continue their history of polluting and murdering people because of their sloppiness. You're absolutely correct, but we don't want it here either. And that's, you know, this gentleman has worked on the mines, so trust the engineers, you know? If we know that they can do better, then demand they do better. And that is one way to do so. Why are they submitting for a permit that they can do better? Because we have the technology and, you know, AI to do better modeling, you know? We're in 2024, we don't need to live by these outdated. We don't need to live by these outdated systems of measurements and modeling. I can't pretend to understand, but I know that we can expect more. We're in an elementary school, like, you can see already what's happening, right? And so one of the other big concerns that I can't pretend to know and speak expertly on, but it's that sulfuric acid processing plant that's going to be there. And nobody has really brought it up too much, but this particular plant makes this project even more dangerous and more, need more control and oversight. And please, as a community that lives right up the road, I just ask that you really keep your mission and values in the forefront because we can't put a price on our community, on our public health, on our environment, on our water. There's so much at stake and we're just counting on you to really stand up for us.
Yes.
All the diehards. Yeah, thanks. Thanks very much.
We want to know what's going on. That's why we're here.
We're doing our best. I'm the executive director of San to San, Save the Sea Next Santa Rita's. And you just heard from my colleague and coworker, Anand Narayan. We have a huge number of members, many of whom worked as volunteers and board members. Some of them are here today. We think every day about how to stop this mine. There was a lot of information today that I kept wanting to jump up and say, well, that's not true. Well, that's not true either. Very from things like, one gentleman said there's a shortage of copper right now. There's not a shortage of copper right now in the US. People flew through around, some of the folks from the industry that were, you know, creating energy-efficient machines for the mining industry were saying things like copper, and they didn't exactly say it's a, well, one could say it's a critical mineral. They were saying it's a critical mineral. Well, copper is not a critical mineral. The U.S. Geological Survey that has the responsibility under law to keep a list of critical minerals that are going to be in short supply has declined to list it despite pressure from Senator Sinema and others to list it. And the director of USGS has pushed back with a letter and said, it's not in short supply. Now, even if we find ourselves in the need for more copper in the future, and this gets, I think, to the heart of our organization's mission, the fact that we might need more copper in the future does not mean that we need the Copper World project. There's a huge difference between whether or not, and we could talk about, we recently did a report which, oh, this line is a testy little one. We, our organization contracted with a top-flight economics firm, one of the members is Princeton PhD in economics, to try to do an analysis of the pros and cons of the mine, the likely effects on the Pima County economy. And, you know, and HUDB tried to respond by getting their own economic reports from consulting firms with close relationships with the mining industry to say that our report was wrong. You know, our report says, and this is just common sense, right? Like, okay, so there's going to be a handful of new jobs created by the mine and there'll be some taxes paid to, local property taxes paid by the mine. But then you have to look at, okay, what's going to be the effect on the tourism industry, which in Pima County alone is $2.4 billion a year as measured in 2022? What's going to be the effect on the Pima County tourism industry when we lose the Santa Rita's and they're, you know, the place, the home of El Jefe, the world's most famous jaguar, is turned into a giant pit and toxic waste piles? So there's that. And then likewise, I don't know if you guys all know it, but there's a mine under serious early stages of development in the Patagonias by another foreign company, Australia in this case, El Rey Two. So what's going to happen to this major driver of our economy, tourism, when we've got, hey, we got no Santa Rita's, we got a giant pile of toxic waste? We got no Patagonias, we got a giant pile of toxic waste? Although probably down there, there'll be more than one mine, there'll be lots of piles of toxic waste. So there's that. So we could go back and forth on the economy forever, but it just looks like, you know, you think about it, it's common sense. Okay, tourism's going to take a hit, outdoor recreation's going to take a hit, housing market is going to take a hit. Who the heck wants to buy a house that's 600 feet from a 500-foot-tall pile of toxic waste? And the 2023 plan for Copper World has in it that, I think Big Brown was talking about in Showdown's chart, there's the North Tailings Pile. You know, that's going to be 600 foot from the nearest house, it's going to be one and a half miles, a little bit less from Copper Ridge Elementary School. Who the heck is going, there it is. Who the heck is going to want to buy a house there? What does that mean? So I think that goes to the heart of all this, more than talking about and arguing about, well, how many jobs are there going to be and are they going to be efficient and are the workers going to be safe? Again, the workers are probably going to be safe and they're probably going to be well-paid. But I think Anand really put her finger on it. There's, HUDB's done a great job of dividing our community between the people that want to get those mining jobs and maybe give supplies to miners and equipment to the mine for those jobs. So you've got people that way who are rightly looking out for themselves and their family and thinking about, oh, I can get one of these jobs. And then, but on the other hand, you've got the lives of people who have invested their whole lives. And like in the case of our board member, Steve Brown, who grew up on a ranch on the foothills of the Santa Rita's and ran cattle as a young man on the Santa Rita Experimental Range. So there are people, and then there are a lot of people that have found their dream houses, their dream properties. I'm looking at Kathy over there and you. And their lives are going to be turned upside down. The view out their back porch is going to be a tailings pile. When the wind blows, I don't know how much they're going to trust ADQ that there won't be significant levels of lead, which the Center for Disease Control, U.S. Center for Disease Control says there is no safe level of lead. It is a devastating neurotoxin for children. You know, even if ADQ says, oh, and the gentleman who was here before says, oh, we put stuff on the top to magically prevent the wind from blowing. And I heard a lot of people say that there had been a winter bed two weeks ago, but horse dust blew in it. So, but, you know, how are you going to feel? What confidence are you going to have when you're living in your house? And more than that, and the last point I'll make, which is, I know I'm probably way over.
What about me?
So the last thing I want to make before I presume when you're talking too much, because I know it's the end and everyone is tired, so my apologies. The last point is that a huge economic driver for Pima County are people who move here, many of them retirees. They come here not to get jobs, but to live off investments and retirement savings. Those investments and retirement savings make up almost 50% of all the income in Pima County. That is a massive drop there. And there's 6,000-plus people who come on average every year and they come to live in Pima County. And y'all know why they come to live here. It's beautiful. They can recreate. They have vistas.
It's warm. It's warm?
It's warm. It's warm. That's one of the five Cs, this climate. And any more copper is not one of the five Cs. Copper, you know, these jobs will give less than a tenth of 1% of all the jobs in Pima County. These jobs are going to be minuscule. So we'll put that aside. But the main point is just like, think about, let's suppose the Santa Rita's, the Patagonias, and who knows what else are turned into giant piles of tailings. Who the heck is going to want to move to Pima County and say, yeah, I want to go, buy me a house in Corona Day, Tucson, 600 feet from a giant toxic waste dump? Like, that ain't going to happen, folks.
If they don't come.
And if they don't come, where's that, where's that income go? Where's that 50% of Pima County income if they don't come? It just takes, and the economic report, I don't know how many of you guys got your hand on it, but we still have copies here, paper copies of the executive summary. If you get your hands on there, there's some numbers in there about, you know, the amount of people coming every year only has to drop about 2% in order to offset all the jobs from the mine. You know, it doesn't take much of a, much of a drop in people coming to say, you know, so anyway, that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. And I just want to say to you, you know, you need guys, I was wishing, I was hoping everyone was still here. So many, many years ago in my youth, but I was a member of the Construction Union in San Francisco and I still am big union booster. So it's weird to me to be sort of on the other side of this issue. So, you know, I hear, you know, your issues and your desires to have your family, have good jobs, but it comes down to part of the lyrics in the song we heard, which is, "not the right mine, not the right place." If we need copper, more copper, it doesn't have to be here. There are a lot of copper mines in the US, big ones right now, operating under full capacity. So, thank you.
We have one more speaker, Mr. Is it Kaylee? Delazio?
It's Kaylee, but I probably wrote it all wrong. All right, I'm Katie Palacio and I live just around the corner here in Corona Day, Tucson. We're a military family and we moved back here last year, actually, because of having the opportunity to serve here at camp. I grew up around the corner off of Sarita and Winward, and so males to my home. We were so excited to come back here and because we love Southern Arizona so very much and I love these mountains. We grew hiking here, we grew, you know, four-by-four riding in them. And one of the things that we have here growing up, I don't care as much with all the new people here, but growing up, we had the veil of gale, is what we always called our windstorms that were here. And they roll through these mountains directly this way from where the mine is down into the valley. That's the direction they blow. They will throw your patio furniture everywhere. They will make it hazy. Everyone that lives in Corona knows what the wind does here. I, as a mom, to children that have launched in this period, cannot be comfortable with tailings that will blow dust. And I know they will blow dust. My dad worked in Green Valley at the mine site over there as a heavy equipment hand. I know what mining is. I provided for my family growing up. He also died from his work. It is not something that I feel like Corona wants because we are aware of it living it. It's easy for people that get paid to say they promote something and they want something, but when you're not getting paid and you live with the consequences of it, it is far harder to agree with it. I don't think the permit, especially as the Class II, is valid how it's, how HUDB is listing it. Maybe Class I, but for sure, we need more time, we need more research because how it's presented right now does not reflect what is going to go on. And that's it. That's the last.
Very good. I love it.
Does anyone that has not made a comment wish to comment?
My name is Virginia Lopez. I live in Green Valley. I've lived here for five years. I lived here from a western Chicago suburb. I came here for nine years before that in the winter, just a couple winters short because I love birds. I'm now a member of Tucson Audubon and every year they have a festival that draws people from all over the world to come here because we have birds here in southeastern Arizona that are nowhere else in our whole country. And we have people coming here to see these birds, to hike our mountains, to be in Santa Rita's where they are. I have been there and heard many foreign languages being spoken in the mountains because people are coming here, as Rob Peterson, and bringing in lots of energy, lots of love for the area, and lots of economic growth. Many of them decide this is the area for them and they permanently move here later after they have visited. Finally, I can't tell you how many times a day I look at the mountains. They're in my heart. They bring tears to my eyes. They change with every minute of the day because of the lighting, because of the clouds, because of the humidity in the air, because of where the sun position is in the sky. They're magnificent and they're beautiful and they're in my heart. And I will cry when they're destroyed. So please, please, look at all of what's been said tonight, not just from the economic point of view or the scientific point of view, but look at how they affect people deep within inside and how they contribute so much to our lives. Thank you.
Any other comments? This young lady is going to speak first, but I think Sir.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience. I know it's been a long night. I didn't come here planning to say anything, but I feel particularly moved. My name is Valerie Arenas. I, my husband and I moved here from New York City. We chose this as our home. We took our life savings to buy a home in this community, to raise our children. My daughter goes to Copper Ridge Elementary. She's five. That school goes to fifth grade. The plan was for her to go to that school until she needed to go to a different one when she goes to middle school. To this school, actually. I'm asking you, please, Mr. HUDB, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Think about your children. Think about your grandchildren. I'm asking you, please, think about your children, your grandchildren. Would you be okay with this in your backyard? Would you encourage your children or their grandchildren to move here? There are so many people in Arizona who have chosen this as their home because it's an amazing place. And we all want jobs. We all need jobs. We all need to take care of our families. There's got to be a better way, especially when our children are at stake. Thank you.
We have another gentleman coming up.
Yeah, I'll keep it in the three minutes. Oh, Ali. My name is Joyce Davin Gordon. I live just down the road over in the Bay Area and I've lived in that area now for well over 30 years, 32, 35 years, raised some kids here and enjoy, enjoy this, everything here, you know, the beauty of these mountains, the beauty of these sunsets. So now we're dealing with this situation that will be profitable for some people for whatever, 10 years, 20 years, something like, a short period of time, this area is, and the people who have come and gone here. It's just a wonderful. It's just a wonderful situation here. And we're teetering on the brink of letting all that go. And we're not the only ones. There's other person in this boat here. This area, unique as it is, attracts people from all over the world. And those folks come here from the uniqueness of this territory, whether it's the birds, you know, whether it's the animals, whether it's these beautiful mountains. Those folks aren't going to come here if what we got are some big holes in the ground. And that's what we're going to get here. It's coming. If you, if you don't believe me, take a little trip up to Morinsee, pass through that area, you know? And quite frankly, you know, copper, yeah, copper was king, whatever, you know? It's part of the three Cs, you know? Hopefully, we're not going to add another C, and there might be cancer or whatever that around. I don't be known for that. But I do in this area to maintain the beauty that it has. It's going to take us all a lot of hard work and a lot of commitment to that. And I'm sorry, all the folks in New York jerseys didn't stick around. And they're not going to stick around. When this outfit hauls out of here and goes to China, if everything is in the back of a dump truck, the jersey's going with it. About to be claimed and all back, you know, tournament folks. This is such a transient thing here versus what's been here for forever. And we can talk about the economy. We can talk about pollution. We can talk about tourist dollars. There are so many things you can come at this, this situation with. Everyone unvalid for why that mine should not be here. That's what I got. One more, you do your head?
Thank you.
Well, I certainly did plan on speaking tonight, but I did hear a couple of items that I'd like to address. My name is Peter DeMars, and I recently gave a lecture, actually this Monday, on some changing lead issues. The NSF, National Safety Foundation, Section 61, Part 9, talks about lead in the last time a liter of water that you drank out of a plumbing system. And those requirements dropped by a factor of three in 2022, which was pretty radical. I hope that the permit for this is addressing that. But that factor three was optional. So contractors, builders didn't have to put in systems that actually complied with it until January of 2024, when it's not optional, now it's required. So the question I have is, how quickly does the community expect the mining industry to adapt, to change the requirements in terms of poisons that are released into the atmosphere? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commentators? If we have no other commentators, once again, I urge you to submit written comments to the department. Thank you for attending this hearing this evening. Your interest is appreciated. It is now 8:36 PM, September 10th, 2024. This public hearing is adjourned.